Seeing at 6:00 PM, I'd like to call the February 5, 2025 Regular Meeting of the Kansas City Council to order. I'd like to welcome everybody here this evening and ask that if you are able, would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Gabriel?
Here.
Councilmember Kessina?
Here.
Councilmember Dohit?
Here.
Councilmember Askin?
Here.
Vice Mayor Naxted?
Here.
Councilmember Daniel?
Here.
Councilmember Sonar is not present, and Student Representative Tanner?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Council, before we get to approval of the agenda and consent agenda, I'd like to call your attention to a laydown you should have in front of you with the request of additions to the packet. Action, add to item C1, Schedule Public Comments, Kenai Chamber Commerce and Visitor Center Annual Report. It's requested by the city clerk. And then, action, add to item K1, City Managers' Report, Project Related Funding, Federal Funding Memo, requested by administration. Pledge of Counsel. Vice Mayor Naxted.
Thank you, Mayor. I move for approval of the agenda and consent agenda with inclusion of add item C1 and add item K1, requesting consent.
I'll second.
Is there any suggested amendments to the agenda or consent agenda at this time from the body? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to please read the consent agenda into the record.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Approval of the regular meeting minutes of January 15, 2025. New business action approval bills to be ratified, brought to you by the administration. Action approval, non-objection to the renewal of a package store liquor license for Cars Gottstein Foods Company, doing business as Oak and Cig Number 1808, License Number 3218, brought to you by the city clerk. Action approval, non-objection to the renewal of a package store liquor license for Three Bears Alaska Inc., doing business as Three Bears, License Number 4118, brought to you by the city clerk. Introduction of Ordinance Number 3449, 2025, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations in the General Fund Police Department and accepting grants from the United States Department of Justice and Alaska Municipal League Joint Insurance Association for the purchase of ballistic vests, brought to you by the administration, public hearing on February 19, 2025. An introduction of Ordinance Number 3450, 2025, amending sections of Kenai Municipal Code Title 23 Personnel Regulations, Section 2305070, Definitions, 2325080, Promotion, 2330030, Probationary Period of Formed Employees in the Classified Service, and 2355020, Compensation Structure by Grade for Employees in the Classified Service to Ensure a Consistent Approach to Pay Adjustments for City Employees, brought to you by the administration, public hearing on February 19, 2025, and that is your consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Does anybody from the general public like to speak to any item that was on the consent agenda, which was just read into the record? Do we have anybody online showing? Nobody online, nobody in chamber, seeing none. I'll bring it back to council. Your house consent was requested, is there any objection? Seeing none, the agenda and consent agenda is approved. That brings us to item B, Schedule Administrative Reports. This evening, we have the annual review of City of Kenai Permanent Funds, 2024 Financial Performance, Financial Projections, and Recommended 2025 Asset allocations for the City's Permanent Funds. And with us this evening, we have Brandy Nicolai and Bill Lierman from Alaska Permanent Capital Management. Welcome.
Brandy Nicolai, Alaska Permanent Capital. I'm the Chief Investment Officer of Multi-Asset Strategies, which is really just a fancy way of saying, since the permanent fund owns lots of different asset classes, our team is responsible for managing that account for the city. Bill Lierman is here with me. He's the Chief Investment Officer of Fixed Income. His team recently started managing a fixed income account for the city. He'll touch on that briefly after my comments. So I'll go ahead and get started. We have our normal presentation here where I will actually cover the history of the permanent fund, what it's earned, and then we'll switch gears a little bit, talk about our forward-looking projections. We do not have any changes in terms of asset allocation that we're recommending at this time because we do think that the city is well-positioned to earn the return that you need to support inflation protection as well as distributions into the future. So with that, let me get started here. What you see here is just an overview of the account since inception. It started with APCM in September 2008. There's been total contributions of $22.6 million and withdrawals of $17.3 million. The market value at the end of December was $36.1 million. So since that time period, if we look at the returns and annualize them since inception, the account has earned 7.4% or 5% on an annualized basis. So pretty strong return since inception, and we have a good mix here of growth assets within global stocks. We have global bond exposure to provide some stability during market volatility. And then we have a bucket we call alternatives, and that bucket is really designed to help provide some inflation protection as well as diversification from stocks and bonds. So here, we're looking at an area chart. In the background of this chart, the gray area is just the market value of the permanent fund assets since inception. The bar charts that you see displayed down below are just the calendar year returns we've actually had. So you can see, we've had a lot of years where we have had positive performance. We had a couple of years with the market downturns, particularly in 2022. If you recall, post-COVID, we had the big inflationary spike, and when that happens, we had a sell-off in bonds and stocks. And so the point I want to make in that regard is that during that time, the portfolio was down about 13.6%, but that was about the same amount bonds were down. So despite the fact you owned global stocks and you have a riskier profile than just a bond-only portfolio, the portfolio weathered very well, and that really has to do with the alternative bucket that we added as we've made our recommendations over the years. So I do like to take those percentages and put them in dollar terms. And so if you look at the top of the page, and your current market value is 36.2%, and if you take away the contributions you've made since inception and add back the withdrawals, since inception, the permanent fund has earned $30.5 million. So I'm going to switch gears here a little bit and talk about the forward-looking projections. So our team thinks about, you know, the state of the global economy and the financial markets. We look at how all these different asset classes are priced, and we try to think about forward-looking return assumptions going forward. And the really, the purpose of this is to make sure that the current strategy that the permanent fund has is, has a high probability of meeting your goals. And so the goals are inflation protection and then also providing distributions. I'm going to focus your attention on the middle line where it says long-term return gross, 6.8%. So that's what APCM thinks the 10-year average annual return will be going forward. Of course, we own some risk to actually achieve that return, and so there's going to be some ups and downs in the markets, given the natural volatility that we have. And the range of returns that you see there, negative 11.7 to 29.2, that's where we think the portfolio could trade in any given year. And so as long as we're staying within these projections in terms of the return of the portfolio, we think we're on a good track to have a 6.8% return, which, if we take out inflation projections of 2.5%, that leaves us enough to sustain the distribution amount that you have designated in code. So as I mentioned, we have our three goals stated here at the top. The spending policy for the Airport Land Sales Permanent Fund is that if the account is below its inflation-adjusted principal, you take out 3.8%, and if it's above that, you can take out 4.2%. And so in the bottom here, you see a green line and a blue line. And the blue line is the market value of the airport land sale assets, and then the green line is inflation-adjusted principal. So you'll note here, as of December 24, the market value is below that inflation-adjusted principal, and that really has to do with that large inflationary spike that occurred in 2022. So this year, the formula states then that fund can take out 3.8%. So when we do our forward-looking return projections, we take all of those numbers I just went over, and we put it in dollar terms, and that's kind of helpful in terms of thinking about where do we think the permanent fund could grow to? This is specific to the Airport Land Sale Permanent Fund over the next 10 years. So we ran 5,000 different simulations. We started with the part of the permanent fund that's just for the airport land sale at $29.9 million, and then we factored in the withdrawals that we think can occur over the next 10 years, all of which are at a 3.8% rate, just given the differential between the market value and inflation-adjusted principal. And if that happens, you can see the black dash line there. We believe the account at the end of 10 years, our base case estimate would be $39.9 million. Down below, where it says distributions, you can see what the distribution amount is that we'd expect to come out of the account over the next 10 years. So of course, you know, there's probably a question about when can we, when do you project, or when does APCM project that the account will be able to take out 4.2%? Recall, that calculation happens when the market value exceeds that inflation-adjusted principal. And we have in the top left-hand corner there, the code that, you know, relates to the current spending policy. And down below in the bottom left-hand side, you can see that there's a probability over the next 10 years that you'll be able to take out that 4.2% the higher rate, but the probability is pretty low, about 3.6, I'm sorry, 36%. So going forward in the next 10 years, we estimate that the spend rate for the airport portion of the permanent funds will be at the 3.8%. I'm going to cover a couple slides now on the General Fund Land Sales Permanent Fund, and so similar goals to the airport fund. And then you can see here, the blue line is the market value of the portfolio, and the green line is inflation-adjusted principal. There is a difference here, however, because this account, the blue line, which is the market value, exceeds the inflation-adjusted principal. And so they have different, you have different spending policies between these two buckets of assets within the permanent fund, and this particular account does not take distributions if it's below its inflation-adjusted principal. So it's been able to recover a bit more quicker than the other permanent fund account and can certainly take a distribution this year. So when we put the numbers into kind of dollar terms, we start with $3.8 million that the General Fund Land Sales is valued at at the end of December. We take out the withdrawals that we project, you can take out over the next 10 years, and you can see in the black dash line, we think this account will end around $5.4 million 10 years from now. So the point here that I think is important to point out is that because in this particular spending policy, you don't take a distribution if the account is below inflation-adjusted principal, and you have another mechanism in there to kind of have an earnings reserve. And so we did an estimate to say, okay, over the next 10 years, what do we think the probability is that you'll be able to take a distribution? And that's pretty high at 78%. So I'm going to conclude my remarks a little bit on just thinking about the near-term outlook. We were just talking about a longer-term strategic 10-year horizon, and I think that importantly, within the code, we do have some ability to move the portfolio within the ranges that are specified in code based upon our near-term outlook. And that allows us to make some modest adjustments to the portfolio based upon what we think the coming months will bring, and it gives us an opportunity to either dial back risk a little bit or increase risk depending upon how the outlook seems. We've come off of two very strong years. The permanent fund has experienced above expected returns for two years, and that primarily has to do with the fact that the global equity markets have done so well in their post-COVID rebound. And if we look at kind of the key drivers for our 2025 outlook, the top graph where you see a bar chart with orange dots, the key takeaway there is just that when we look at the current price of the equity markets, it's not particularly cheap. And so in some regard, you can kind of think of it as we've, you know, people got excited about future earnings, and they bid up the price of stocks, and so we've kind of taken some future earnings and brought it forward. So that's going to be a headwind, I think, for the near-term equity market returns. But then, when you look at the top right-hand portion, you're looking at a bar chart of global earnings expectations across key economies, and they're positive. So when corporate earnings are positive, that provides an opportunity for positive stock returns. So you have kind of a headwind because stocks are a little bit expensive, and then you have a tailwind because earnings are still expected to be positive. If those earnings come to fruition, it seems reasonable to assume more like positive single-digit returns for the equity markets and the permanent fund asset allocation as a whole, not necessarily double-digit returns that we experienced recently. So in order for those earnings growth expectations to come to fruition, we need positive economic growth. And in the bottom left-hand portion, you just see a bar chart of economic growth expectations across key economies. They're all positive. The U.S. still has expectations of good growth, but we all know that we have a new administration that has policies, of course, that could alter the course of economic growth and inflation. So when we're talking about things like tariffs and immigration policies could impact the outlook, and that's the point in the bottom right-hand side that says, you know, the policy uncertainty is beginning to become elevated. So right now, we're not positioning the permanent fund on the basis of making any definitive calls on what the new administration will do in terms of tariffs, our immigration. We're watching as things are happening, and we'll adjust course if we need to, but for now, we're maintaining our exposure to the, our target exposures, the equity markets. We've put in a couple of positions in the portfolio to account for some of these key risks that we see associated with the policies that can happen. So for example, we've increased a little bit of our gold, or, I'm sorry, for example, we've increased some of our exposure within the equity markets to keep it up in higher quality, and we're prepared for moving the portfolio should the path of economic growth change. Again, I mentioned growth is supposed to be positive. If policies actually, you know, change that course and economic growth begins to decline, I think it's really important to point out that there's a lot of value in the bond portfolio or the bond side of the portfolio. So, you know, as economic growth, if it did turn down, interest rates would likely fall. If interest rates in the U.S. fell by 1%, the bond side of the portfolio could have a total return of 11%. So it's not like the 2022 environment. I think there are some asset classes that will be able to produce some positive returns in different types of macroeconomic environments. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Bill, and he's going to just touch on a couple of slides in the new custody account that our firm is managing.
We took over this account, started managing this account in November for you guys. Some of this data is pretty freshly new. The account is made up of fixed income securities from one year to three or zero to, out to five years. The market value of that account is $32.4 million, and the yield on that account is The bench here, and I just want to kind of relate to this bench, is 4.27. And what is that bench? That's how you guys would benchmark us. That benchmark is a 1 to 3 government index. So basically, if you go in the bond market and you find all the government bonds, treasuries, and agencies that mature between 1 and 3 years, and you co-mingle those together, that would be the benchmark. So the portfolio is not completely set up versus the benchmark because of the IPS restrictions, and I'll kind of dive into that in a second, but that kind of gives you guys to show how we are doing versus an index. So as we move forward in this relationship with this account, and we look at the performance in the bottom right-hand corner, that should be at or above that benchmark as we move forward. So I just want to point that out from the benchmark. The GVXX, that's the money market fund that if you guys, if all this money was being held at the custodian in all cash, that would be what, that would be invested in. So, you know, to look at us and how the fund's doing over a 12-months or a two-year period, you want to kind of know what is it doing against cash, because these are liquid assets that are for operating, but also some sort of a benchmark. How is APCM doing against benchmark? And that's going to be up in that right-hand corner as we work through. So far, in the portfolio, there's been no sells in the portfolio. Anything that's matured, we've been rolling out into the two- and three-year bucket, and the reason why is we're kind of at the point in the interest rate cycle that we think interest rates are more apt to come down than move up in the front end, being 0 to 3 years. So we're trying to lock in as many of those rates as possible before interest rates start moving down. If we think about that portfolio, the one thing I'd note is the coupon income over the next 12 months is about $1.2 million on the portfolio. The IPS constraints, so we do have some constraints to manage this portfolio. All securities in this portfolio have to be five years or mature within five years. Second, 20% of the portfolio has to be one year and less. So when we're thinking about liquidity and how much cash that's in this portfolio, 20% of this portfolio is going to be maturing in one, 0 to 1 year. No more than 30% of the portfolio may be invested. Security is greater than two years, and all these securities are government securities. So that's why that benchmark kind of aligns with the portfolio, because all the securities have to be treasuries, agencies, agency mortgage-backed securities within that. So pretty limited on that compared to what, what the, how much liquidity is needed off this portfolio. If we look at the bottom left, this is a snapshot at the end of December, 67% of the portfolios is in U.S. Treasuries. There's 2% in cash, 2% in CDs, and then 29% in agency mortgage-backed securities within that portfolio. One thing I would like to just kind of raise with you guys and a recommendation, and I was talking to staff earlier today regarding this, as we get to know this portfolio a little bit more, we kind of recognize that there's probably a little bit, there's abundance of liquidity, there's not a lot of withdrawals coming off this portfolio. We would like to work with staff over the course of the year and provide some different recommendations of maybe to increase risk, to align liquidity and risk within the portfolio by either allowing a portion of the portfolio to be, to relax that 0 to 20% in the front end, 0 to 1, allow us to invest a little bit out the yield curve, and also possibly look at corporate bonds and other securities that are investment-grade, and then bring those recommendations back to staff and you guys. I'll pause there if there's any questions on the two, first two portfolios, and Brandy and I got one thing to go about some changes at APCM that we would like to bring to you guys's attention. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Any questions? Must be doing a pretty good job.
If you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, we got two more minutes, and Brandy will go, kind of go over a couple of changes that are happening at APCM.
Sure. Definitely.
So we have some actually exciting news to announce about changes at our firm. If you all recall, our firm was started by Dave Rose. He was the first Executive Director of the State of Alaska Permanent Fund. And when he left the permanent fund in the '90s, he started our firm. He wanted to bring high-quality institutional service to the State of Alaska. When he retired, he turned over the firm to his son Evan Rose, who's been our CEO for quite some time. Evan is human, and he'd like to retire too, and he's doing so responsibly, going through a succession plan. Part of that succession plan is to sell his majority shares of the firm, and those majority, new majority shareholders are going to be a private holding company here in Alaska called Blue Umbrella. Bill and myself will still hold minority shares in the firm. The great thing about Blue Umbrella is they're in Alaska. They specialize actually in succession planning and helping key businesses in the State of Alaska go through that process and still remain in business and thriving and growing into the future because they recognize what businesses are important to our communities. And so we're happy to partner with Blue Umbrella, and you should see no change. They don't want to change any staff at our, at our firm. People that have been managing the city's portfolio are going to remain in place. So a lot of the changes, you probably wouldn't notice, but we thought it'd be important for you all to know about the ownership changes.
Any questions from the body? You answered my question. I asked if there was, I was going to ask if there was going to be any material changes, but it doesn't sound like there will be moving forward.
No.
Okay. No? Very good. Thank you. Appreciate you coming down and presenting as always. Council on Item C, Schedule Public Comment. Here this evening, we have the Kenai Chamber Commerce Visitor Center Annual Report with Ms. Springer here, who is the Executive Director. Hi, Sam.
Hello, everybody. Okay, so, finally got this done, last minute. Sure Shelley loves me right now. So, wanted to go over basically a year-end review. This is my, 2024 was my first entire year. So now, in March, it'll be two years with the chamber. So, learned a lot, gotten through some growing pains, and pretty excited about that. So, you guys have this all in your packet, but I'll just kind of briefly go over some of the things on here. Again, we continued with a lot of our, you know, community programs that we've had as staples for years, Fourth of July, Christmas Comes to Kenai, working with the Kenai Silver Salmon Derby, Kenai River Marathon, et cetera. I think that we've expanded a lot of those things in really positive ways. The Silver Salmon Derby, we moved to having very limited paper copies and moving to mostly electronic derby entries. We saw 200 more entries this year because of that. And also, having it during the same times, the Kenai Women's Classic is a huge thing. We got a good chunk of our tickets from that as well, because they're already going out fishing. So, the convenience of that made a huge difference on, on that, and I can't wait to see how that goes this year. Obviously, you guys approved having a cultural center coordinator. That's gone really well. Danielle's absolutely amazing. What she can do in 24 hours a week is, I don't even understand how she does it. She's a superhero. So, those rotating exhibits have started. We're already on to our second one, which is Russian Alaska. So, please stop by and check that out. And another thing that we really focused on in 2024 was strengthening relationships with other organizations. So, working with KPAD, working with other chambers of commerce in, or on the Kenai Peninsula to join forces and try and figure out how to make marketing dollars go further, not only for local in-state tourism, but also marketing to tourism through data sets that we've been collecting to target those states that are already looking to come here and trying to figure out how to get them here in Kenai, when they're already going to Lake Homer or other places on the peninsula. And then, looking ahead, again, I can't help myself. I keep coming up with new programs, even though I don't have any more time. So, we've created a whole other lecture series, which is the Kenai Chronicles Beyond the Exhibit, which will coincide with the different exhibits that we'll be doing. And again, we're going to continue with the same, like Haunted Chamber last year, again, thousands of people came through. It was a huge success, another free event that we do for the community. Christmas Comes to Kenai, reindeer were a big hit, just saying. I don't know where I'm going to put them now that we have the museum or the cultural center up and running. But it was, it was a really fun year. It was very busy, and looking forward to seeing what else we can do in '25. So, here's our visitor count. This is always a little tricky, because you have to remember we're hand-counting this. This has to do with when visitors come in, the front desk marks down who came in, we're counting when people come to events. So this is approximate, but it's pretty close to what we had last year. We were a lot slower in April than we were in '23, but we made up for it in the summer. Lots of things happening in the actual facility that I'm very proud of. I feel like we have moved a lot of things to be actually center-based, especially our fundraiser and some other events. We, these are a list of all the events that we had in 2024, the different programs we had and how many of those we did, and then exhibits in 2025 will pretty much be double of that, because again, we'll be changing out the cultural center exhibits as well as having the First Friday Artist, Artist Series. So, yeah, as you can see, we are, are busy, rocking and rolling. It's really good. Staffing, we are fully staffed, so that's been really nice. Again, everything's kind of stayed steady with that. We are looking to find grants for increasing Danielle's time for the cultural center coordinator. When we presented the RFP, it was my goal to not have to receive any more funds from the city for that position, that we'd be applying for grants, and that is our plan. So, right now, we're in the process of looking into grants to further fund that position, because like I said, what she can do in 24 hours, I can't even imagine if she actually had 40 hours in there, it'd be pretty amazing. And we are working on getting museum accreditation, so that takes quite a bit of time, and the grant-writing process. She's literally writing grants for herself to get paid. So, yeah, takes a lot of time. And then Julia, I don't know if everyone knows this, she is on administrative leave from us, and she is in Juneau as Bill Elem staffer, and then she'll come back in May when that, when session's over. So that was pretty cool, that she got to do that. And then we'll start looking for our seasonal visitor center representative, probably within the next month or so, we'll advertise for it, and then be helping the Kenai Historical Society recruit new docents as well. So. Hours of operation are the same, nothing's changing there. Always like to include it, so you guys have an idea of when we are open, when we're closed. And then, this is a fun. So I have planned out the entire 2025 year, literally. I would love to see faces there, luncheons, our lecture series. I have all luncheons scheduled except for two for the entire year. So, we are definitely busy, but it's going to be great. So, like I said, that's there for you guys as a reminder to come to all of those things, because we really appreciate the support, and obviously, it's a lot of work to, to put all this stuff together. So, we appreciate you guys coming out and checking it out. And that's pretty much my whole report. So if anyone has any questions, I'm available.
Questions for Ms. Springer? Vice Mayor next then.
Thank you, Mayor. Not so much of a question, although you could take the statement and go with it if you like, but Danielle, your, your exhibit coordinator, she does a magnificent job. You know, I've talked with her on a number of issues, not issues, but just people she could talk, she, she follows up, she does that, and she's got a schedule for, through August that I know of, with people that are going to be presenting, and it's definitely something worthwhile going to. I went to the last one, it was very good. I'm looking forward to the next. So, I certainly hope that you can get some additional funding for her, because I have a feeling that she's working more than 24 hours. She's doing something on her own, because that's, it's a huge lift.
That is also my concern, and I have told her not to. And, I mean, it's no different than me supposedly working 40 hours a week. It's impossible. But she is amazing, and the last thing I want to do is lose her, because we only have her for 24 hours. So, we're going to be monitoring that pretty closely, and we're going to make it work for sure.
Any other questions? Just wanted to say it's remarkable that you can put out a calendar a year ahead of time. That's, is pretty impressive. Most people look like 30 days ahead, so. I got the last one, you handed out in calendar form in my kitchen, so quickly reference. Any other questions? Councilmember Daniel.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. So, the museum accreditation, how does that help the chamber? What do we, what does that look like?
So with museum accreditation, there's a lot more protection of the artifacts. There's quite a bit more grants available for maintaining and archiving and collaboration. Just, it really opens up an entire world. The, the only thing, and the reason I'm sure it hasn't been accredited yet, is the amount of time it takes every single item, and as you guys know, it's an over 4,000-item collection, has to have information where it came from, et cetera, how it was donated, how it was received. We have to notify every native organization, native population, if we have their items, to basically give them a list of everything that we have, of, from their culture, and then they have to approve that we, that the city has it. So that's part of it. And again, this is all data-based, and it's pretty crazy, actually.
I don't think it's been a journey. So where are we at with that? Sounds like a lot has been done, but you're still working on them, guessing.
Well, yeah, that, so, we, I don't even know how to really put it, because, so, you know, we have the switchovers, which she switched, she switched over the entire cultural center in two days, from the early Kenai to the Russian Alaska exhibit. The rest of the month, she's planning for the next exhibit and documenting and reaching out to, because the biggest thing right now, too, is a lot of the donations weren't recorded well. And some of them were not even, they were loans, which should have expired years ago, and so now we're trying to contact those individuals to see if they still want them to be on loan, if they're still alive, if they're, if their family wants those artifacts back, because again, the paperwork trail is really, so there's like, there's so much that I don't even know if I could give you an, an actual timeline on that, but we are working on it. And we do have a, an umbrella 501(c)(3) access through bridges right now to apply for the grants that we wouldn't be able to necessarily apply for without that museum accreditation.
Thank you. That's a lot to take in.
Ms.
Not yet.
Ms., you can't talk unless we're in a second, unless you're being recognized by the, by the body here. So any other questions, Ms. Springer? Vice Mayor next then.
I'm sorry. Well, I'm just going to, kind of go on. Good point on the, on the museum thing, if you can get that accreditation. I think that's something the city here has been without, and has been needing for a very long time. But what I see that that's going to provide, from another perspective primarily, is you're going to see more people wanting to donate or lend or whatever, if it's to, to something like that, because it's, it's kind of real, I suppose, and they're just, I think there's been a reluctance until, there has been a reluctance, and I think that's clinging to an end with this, so I think.
And we've actually turned away, people have come in to try and either donate or loan items, and we have been turning them actually to the Kenai Historical Society for now, because we can't take on any more than what we have until we figure out what we have and how it's maintained at this point. It's, it's definitely a journey. I don't think it will be this year for sure, but I'm hoping, again, if I can get Danielle to 40 hours a week, and then when Julia comes back, a lot of her focus as administrative assistant, we are going to shift that toward the cultural center, because I feel like there's a lot more work for her to do there than there is on the chamber of commerce side. Those roles are pretty locked in right now. So, between me, Natalie, and Brittany, we have the chamber side covered pretty well. We just need the, the visitor side on the cultural center tackled at much more detail, especially when we start getting into event season. As you know, once it hits Fourth of July for us, that basically kicks off our entire event season as well, and then, you know, luckily, we get that break in December.
Further questions, comments? Thank you, Sam. Appreciate it, as always. Counselor, next up, we're on item D, unscheduled public comment, unscheduled public comment. Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to address the counsel at this time, and any item that is not on the agenda or consent agenda? Please come forward, just give her name and whether you live in the state of Kenai, and go to the floor.
Name, Jeanne Van Gorder. I'm on the record. Jeanne Van Gorder, 315 Portlock Street, that's a mile away. How you doing, Mr. Gabriel?
Very good. Thank you, Jeanne.
I have a, I came, I'm the only one in the neighborhood that showed up tonight, but this was a post on Facebook that I was, somebody told me about that we're a little concerned with. I can't read it because I don't have my glasses, but I can make copies if that's something you guys need. It's the car shop that closed down. He lost the business. Now he wants to, or she wants to start the business in the home, and I don't, we're concerned with the traffic and having a retail business in the neighborhood. And that is, that's pretty much it, really.
So, yeah, kind of where this would go, if there was someone that was wanting to start a business in their home, they would have to, you'd have to look at the zoning requirements to the land, land use table, and whether for that, however it was zoned, would require a conditional use permit or was a permitted use. So, there's a process that would have to be followed. I'm not exactly sure what the, the zone is. I see our city manager jotting down some notes here, but that, that would start out at the planning and zoning department within the city of Kenai.
And then the name would be here, the notice or something?
I would have to defer to our planner, but, and we've got him in the back room, just to ease your mind, we don't usually go this in-depth, but I would just follow, I just suggest that you would, you would follow up with a, with a conversation with our planner. Let's, let's go there, and then that's, that's where you would start, and then see the process that they would have to go through to open a business. Does that sound fair?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. I see, Councilmember Dalton has his.
This is the Alaska Car Shop, the remote RC car business that closed down on K Beach, and yeah, I saw that same post. I did mention it to planning and zoning to look into. I don't know where we're at on that, but one good thing is if you see and have concerns about this, you can go online, so there's a record online, and tell all the neighbors too, if they're concerned about something. They go online, there's a form they fill out, submit it to P&amp;Z, and then they can look at it from there, and then there's actually a public record for it, and they're starting that paper trail. So it's one of those things, that's, that's a good way to start. Start the paper trail, file a complaint, hey, this is the property concern, here's X, Y, and Z, you might be able to attach that, I don't know exactly how depth it is, and then they can follow up with you and continue through the process on that. City website, yep, under planning and zoning, and you'll see concerns, and you can make reports and stuff like that.
Thanks very much.
Any further questions? Thank you, Jeanne. Your turn. Is there anybody else from the general public that'd like to address the counsel at this time, and any item that is not on the agenda or consent agenda? Nobody online, nobody in chambers, so it looks like we'll be moving to item E1, Public Hearings, ordinance number 3448-2025, amending Kenai Municipal Code, Section 14.22.010, land use table to allow airports as a principal permitted use in the airport light industrial zone. Pleasure, counsel, vice mayor next then.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to an act ordinance, 3448-2025. Second.
Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to speak to ordinance number Seeing nobody in chamber or line, we'll bring it back to counsel, and I don't, we want to, it seems appropriate, I guess, that we allow an airport in our airport light industrial, under the permitted use, but I just want to have your planner or Mr. Eubank tackle this. Mr. Eubank.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'll, I'll do a real, you know, high level on this, but if you have, you know, in-depth questions, we got Kevin here to, to address. But I think it's exactly what the mayor's referring to. You know, I think we do everything we can here at the city to avoid turnover of employees and have them bring new people in, but sometimes this is one of the benefits, I think, of bringing new people in and fresh eyes into situations. And when, when our new planner, Mr. Budner, was going through the planning and zoning code, one thing that caught his attention is that in order to operate an airport in the airport light industrial zone, it requires conditional use under our current land use table, which I think probably was an oversight at the time the airport light industrial zone was created. This, this ordinance will correct that so that a primary or principal permitted use within that zone, the airport light industrial zone, will be the operation of an airport. So, if you have any specific questions beyond that, I think we should direct them towards Mr. Budner.
It's pretty straightforward, so I see everybody sort of, seems like we're ready to take a vote. Clerk, please go to the roll.
Councilmember Cassano.
No, I was going to agree, it's, Mayor, it's, it's, I want to say it's a no-brainer. I mean, it's, it's, it's probably just an oversight or a typo or something we carried through. Because we were, we were there when this ordinance was created. I was the sponsor.
I know, I was hoping to leave that, I was hoping to leave that part out there, actually.
Well, it's true, so, you know.
But it just so happens that, I agree. But it just so happens that, I agree, I know exactly what you're talking about, yes, an oversight.
But I definitely support this.
Any further comment? Thank you, clerk, please go to the roll.
Councilmember Cassena?
Yes.
Dothet?
Yes.
Askin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Naxted?
Yes.
Councilmember Daniel?
Yes.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
Student Representative Tanner?
Yes.
You have six yes votes. Ordinance number 3448-2025 is enacted.
Thank you. Next up, we have ordinance, or resolution, rather, number 2025-08, Designated the Investment and Allocation Plan for the City's Permanent Funds in Establishing Appropriate Benchmarks to Measure Performance for Calendar Year 2025. Pleasure, council, vice mayor Naxted.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt resolution 2025-08, requesting unanimous consent.
Second.
Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to speak to resolution number Seeing nobody in chamber or line, we'll bring it back to council. Unanimous consent was requested. Is there any objection? Seeing none, and just for the folks following along, this was a sort of follow-through of the first presentation we had regarding our, our investments and asset allocations for permanent funds. No objection to unanimous consent. Resolution number 2025-08 is adopted. That brings us to item E3, Resolution Number 2025-09, Authorizing a Contract Award for the 2025 Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Pleasure, council. Councilmember Cassena?
I'd like to move to adopt resolution number 2025-09. Second.
Is there anybody, is there anybody from the general public that'd like to speak to resolution number 2025-09? Seeing nobody in chambers or online, we'll bring it back to council. Comments, deliberation from council? Member, councilmember Cassena?
Thank you, Mayor. This one's pretty special to me. I, I think this is a result of many, many years of work by several different Parks and Rec directors, especially Director Best and a number of Parks and Rec commissioners over the years to have a single, single focus and goal, and so I'm excited to see this moving forward and excited to see what the community comes back with for feedback on a master plan, so.
Thank you. Further comments? I guess I would just ask real briefly to the city manager and I see our Parks and Rec directors here as well as, can you just kind of give us a quick overlay of what, if, once this is awarded, assuming it gets approved, sort of what's, what's the steps involved with developing a Parks and Recreation Master Plan? Mr. Best?
Through the manager, so I actually have the schedule in front of me. I'm glad I brought that for that reason. So what it'll go with is we'll meet with our consultant that we're, if this gets approved, who will be awarded the contract, and then we'll work with them, we'll do a kickoff meeting, and that will be developing a number of different in-person meetings in the community. We're going to try to target some key events that they could attend. They are proposing a 21-day community survey, probably very similar, I, I foresee like the Bluff survey was, that happened at the chamber, and then there was an online component where anyone could fill that out. So a pretty heavy thing where we'll do a kickoff meeting with them and then develop a plan for the next several months to engage the community so the community can give feedback. And then at the end of it, as they prepare a draft and present it to administration, the final draft is proposed to be presented to council on, in next year in January. So it's about a year, year-long process altogether.
Very good. Mr. Eubank.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to add to that a little bit, that, you know, one of the, the first steps that you have to do in these master plans is kind of document what you already have. And I'll tell you that staff spent a lot of time, you know, identifying all of the city's parks, all the space, city's open spaces, and providing that to the contractor. So, you know, I think that probably reduced a significant cost that the city would have had to incur if, if we had them do that work, because that's part of a master plan a lot of times. But I want to, I want to emphasize to you and to council and to the public, the importance of the public involvement in these master plans, because this really is about, you know, we're trying to engage through multiple avenues with all people in Kenai and what they want to see in the city's Parks and Rec, say, for the next 20 years, you know, and looking at the existing facilities and what are the things they'd like to see. So this really is a community's opportunity to really engage with us, hopefully through multiple different public meetings, through surveys, through all these different means to, you know, help us understand what they want so that we, as, as the administration and the council can then, you know, put plans in place to, to try to meet those needs or those desires. So I just hope that the public takes the opportunity to participate in these things, because it, it really is about listening to them and getting their voice so we understand what the community is looking for.
Thank you, Mr. Eubank and Mr. Best. Further comments, deliberation from council?
Requesting unanimous consent.
Unanimous consent was requested. Is there any objection? Seeing none, resolution number 2025-09 is adopted. That brings us to item E4, Resolution Number 2025-10, Authorizing the Use of the Fleet Replacement Fund for the Purchase of One Ford F-150 Responder Vehicle Utilized in State Equipment, State of Alaska Equipment Fleet Contract and Municipal Anchorage Contract. Pleasure, council, vice mayor Naxted.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt resolution 2025-0, -10, requesting unanimous consent.
Second.
Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to address resolution number 2025-10? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council. Unanimous consent requested. Oh, vice mayor Naxted.
Yeah, I definitely support getting, getting new vehicle here, but I had, do have a question regarding the, it's replacing a vehicle, and my understanding is a lot of the times these vehicles go to other departments or, what is the status of the old, older, the vehicle we're replacing?
Mr. Eubank?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Naxted, so this is a vehicle, I believe, that will transition to the Parks and Rec Department. It's a three-quarter ton pickup, I think, that's being replaced. It is going to be replaced with a half-ton pickup, and that, that vehicle is projected to be with the fire department for probably eight years, seven, eight years, and then I think it transitions to parks at some point as well. I will let council know, you know, this one is actually one that was projected to be purchased, I believe, in FY '24 in the fleet replacement plan, but COVID really turned our fleet replacement plan kind of on its ear, because basically the state, the fleet procurement contracts we have access to with the State of Alaska were all canceled by manufacturers and none were reissued. They're just now starting to come back online. Manufacturers are starting to produce for, for government units again. So I'll, I'll speak to the, the subsequent resolutions on some other vehicles, but this one, I think, is, is kind of on-scheduled as far as the timing of it, or it might be one year behind, but that's kind of where we are with the fleet. And I will also say that I think during this year's budget, I think we met today and talked a little bit, I think you're gonna have, we're gonna have to make some adjustments to some of our assumptions, cost assumptions on these vehicles, because what we're seeing is, is the assumption of, of the, the cost growth over time for these vehicles got kind of turned on its ear a little bit here with COVID, and, and some of these vehicles are costing a little bit more than what we projected. If we don't make adjustments now, basically that means at some point the fleet replacement plan would become insolvent in the future, and we want to definitely avoid that. So we'll be looking to make some adjustments here, probably likely during this year's budgeting moving forward.
With that being said, would you, would we like, this is, this is out of the equipment fund replacement, that's what I read in the memo, but there wasn't, there's no supplemental to that, that's fully charged to that replacement. Mr. Eubank?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So when we looked at it today, the, the fund itself right now is, is capitalized adequately to make these purchases. What we'll likely have to do is increase the payments from the departments that are utilizing these vehicles in the coming years to, to make up some of this ground. So we definitely have enough funds right now to, to purchase what we're projecting to purchase, but we are going to have to make some adjustments going forward.
Very good, thank you. Further discussion? Was unanimous consent requested? I believe it was. Any objection to unanimous consent? Seeing none, resolution number 2025-10 is adopted. That brings us to resolution number 2025-11, Authorizing the Use of Water and Sewer Fund for the Purchase of Two Ford Trucks Utilized in the State of Alaska Equipment Fleet Contract. Pleasure, council, vice mayor Naxted.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt resolution 2025, 2025-11, requesting unanimous consent.
One second.
Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to speak to resolution number 2025-11? Seeing nobody in chamber or line, we'll bring it back to council. Liberation from council. Unanimous consent was requested. Is there any objection? Councilmember, uh, vice mayor Naxted?
Thank you, Mayor. Same question regarding the disposition of the existing vehicles.
Mr. Eubank?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Naxted, so if, if council recalls, the, the fleet replacement plan is only utilized for general fund departments. So these, these two vehicles are for the water and sewer utility. Both were budgeted in FY '24 and weren't able to be purchased. They were rebudgeted in FY '25, and we have the funds now to purchase them. These are, these are replacing some vehicles, you know, unfortunately, you know, the utility foreman's truck, I jokingly refer to it as you could almost Fred Flintstone it, the, the floorboard is significantly rusted out. These, these vehicles are going to be surplus, likely somebody's going to buy them for parts at the end of this, so they're not being transferred to another department. But they were budgeted in FY '24, not purchased, rebudgeted in '25, and we're hoping to get them purchased this year.
Further discussion? Seeing none, unanimous consent was requested. Is there any objection? Seeing none, resolution number 2025-11 is adopted. Brings us to E6, Resolution Number 2025-12, Authorizing the Use of the State, or for the fleet, the use of the fleet replacement fund for the purchase of two Ford transit vans utilized in the State of Alaska Equipment Fleet Contract. Pleasure, council, vice mayor Naxted.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt resolution 2025-12, requesting unanimous consent.
Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to speak to resolution number 21, 25-12? Oh, yes.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you meant like a second, like a, like, no, shall we take a pause? Thank you for that. Sorry, getting ahead of myself here. All right, we got a second. Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to speak to resolution number 21, 25-12? Seeing nobody in chambers, nobody online, we'll bring it back to council. Comments from council? Councilmember Cassena?
Thank you, Mayor. Will these be equipped with the capacity to load people in wheelchairs or other ADA requirements?
Mr. Eubank?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Cassena, no, these, these will not be, they will not have handicap, these two vehicles. We don't have, currently have any of our units that have that capacity. It's something that I've had numerous discussions with the senior center director, and she's looking for some grant opportunities to try to help us get that capacity. These are two vehicles, I will tell you, that are, you know, quite a bit more than what we projected the cost to be, but two factors, two factors causing that. One is, so these, these two vans are going to replace 15 passenger vans that the senior center currently has. The, the replacement vans Cathy's requested to go with higher units, taller units, because it, they're, the existing vans are just difficult for seniors. You have to hunch over to kind of get to the back of the van, so these will provide better access for the seniors. But more importantly, only thing available, and I think it's a good idea if we go this route anyways, only thing available on the state fleet site for these vans is all-wheel-drive vans. Our current vans are two-wheel drives. These will be all-wheel-drive vans, which I think will be safer to operate and probably provide us better success. So those two things, these are, oh, I want to help me here, leave probably $10,000 to $15,000 a unit more than what we projected, but I think a little bit of that's beyond our control, so, but I think they'll serve the center well. And then these two vans will be slated after seven or eight years, and they get a substantial number of miles on them. They will be transitioned to the city's building department, and they will become our building staff's vans that they'll use here in the city. So, you know, it's just the way the city's trying to utilize our vehicles best, based upon mileage and, and other things, so that we get the most life out of the vehicles that we're buying.
Mayor Dothet?
What's the seating capacity on these vans? Are they more or the same, or?
Mr. Eubank?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, and councilmember Dothet, I believe they're both 15 passengers, well.
Further discussion? Vice mayor?
Thank you. Just two quick questions. I think it's obvious, but I want to ask a question. They're transit vans, so the vans' use will be just for transporting seniors, are we going to use it for anything else? And what are going to happen, what's going to happen to the old vans? So we have, I think we have two.
Mr. Eubank?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Mayor. Councilmember Naxted, yes, I do. I mean, I don't, I don't know specifically if they use these meals to deliver, or these vans to deliver any meals or not, but they will be primarily used for transporting seniors in the transportation program over there. The two existing vans, I believe, are slated to be surplus and sold. So they will be surplus likely this spring when we have a surplus auction.
Vice mayor Naxted?
If you don't mind me going down a bit of a rabbit hole that's just a little separate, what does the senior center use for Meals on Wheels for, driving? Now, we used to have a Subaru that was really, really handy, but I didn't know, do you know what we were using currently?
Mr. Eubank, or, yeah, Mr. Eubank?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Councilmember Naxted, I believe they have some smaller transit vans that aren't designed for passengers, per se, but they're the smaller ones that they use. We did have a Subaru that was actually donated to the city by the Meals on Wheels program that was totaled in an accident, that Cathy's trying to get replaced again. And we almost, honestly, we almost repaired that vehicle during COVID. It was totaled, so the estimated cost to repair it was more than it was worth, but, you know, we were looking at, you know, multiple years lead time to get a replacement vehicle, and Cathy, Cathy forewent that, so, but yeah, we do have some smaller units that we use for the meals delivery and things like that.
Further discussion? Seeing none, unanimous consent was requested. Is there any objection? Seeing none, resolution number 2025-12 is adopted. That brings us to resolution number 2025-13, Redirecting Public Safety Capital Project Funds to Complete the Emergency Services Facility Assessment. I'll just make a note that our next item, Resolution 2025-14, is dependent on passage of this resolution. So with that, vice mayor Naxted?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt resolution 2025-13.
All right, I'll second.
Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to speak to resolution number Seeing nobody in chambers or line, we'll bring it back to council. Comments, deliberation from council?
Thank you. No question, I just thought the city manager might want to give a little report of what we're doing here.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Naxted, so the city budgeted $150,000 to do a programming study on the city's 50-year-old public safety building. And the question is for us is, that facility is looking at some significant maintenance issues that it has coming on the not-so-distant horizon, you know, a new roof and some other things likely to cost millions of dollars. And what we're trying to determine is, is it best to go ahead and complete those repairs, or is that facility not going to meet our current needs or future needs of the city? It is 50 years old. I think it's served the city exceptionally well. So this study will take a look at that existing facility. It'll also look at estimating what are the city's needs will be for the next 20, 30, 40 years, and determining what, what the best course of action is for the city. We budgeted $150,000. We had six respondents. I think we had a really good response to the RFP. We had a low, and this, I'm sorry, I'm probably getting a little bit into the next resolution, but, so I feel like we had a good representation of what the services we were asking for. Those bids came in, the lowest bid came in, or the most responsive bidder came in at I did speak with Public Works Director Friday, where this will take that project budget to $210,000. That provides time for Lee and his staff to do the administration of the project, but it also is providing a little bit of contingency in case there's additional environmental testing and things like that. We know. environmental testing and things like that. We know that that facility has asbestos in it. We've been battling that on some other upgrades we've been doing over time, and we just want to make sure we have enough money to complete this project. So it's going to take that project total budget up to about $210,000. Obviously, that contingency won't be spent unless it's needed, but that's where the Public Works Department feels comfortable kind of moving forward with the project and trying to get it complete. The $60,000 is coming from an existing, we funded a project to do some flooring over there at the fire department's side for $100,000. And, you know, pending the results of the study, we're not going to spend that $100,000. They're going to redirect 60 of it to this project so we can determine if that's the facility we'll want to be doing that kind of work. So that's kind of where we are with this project.
Thank you, Mr. Feebank. Further discussion?
Requesting unanimous consent.
Councilmember Daniel.
Just real, thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Real quick, like for the city manager, that $40,000 left over, just, are we holding on to that, or what are the plans for that, the flooring?
Mr. Feebank.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we'll, I need to get with Chief Teague over there and discuss, but likely what's going to happen is that $40,000 will either be returned to the general fund or be used and transferred to other projects in the FY26 budget. So I just need to determine exactly if they have some smaller needs over there that that $40,000 can still meet, or exactly what the plan is.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, unanimous consent was requested. Is there any objection? Seeing none, Resolution 2025-13 is adopted, which allows us to consider Resolution Number 2025-14, authorizing a contract for the 2025 Emergency Services Facility Program and Assessment. Pleasure, council. Vice Mayor Naxton.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution 2025-14 and requesting unanimous consent.
I'll second.
Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to Resolution Number 2025-14? Seeing nobody in chambers or online, we'll bring it back to council. Deliberation from council? Councilmember Dothan.
Just like I say, I'm really happy to see this moving forward. Definitely in favor of this. Now, there was some discussion last year about whether we're going to do it or not, and I think it's an important part, integral part of the community that we need to move forward with ideas, because by doing this, it moves forward to where possibly, once we have a plan, we might be able to find grant funds, and we can start applying for those kind of things and asking for funding. But this gives us that plan to start being able to move forward, and I think it's very important for our community to do that. And I'm glad to see it moving forward. So thank you to staff for doing this.
Further discussion? Yeah, I'd just like to just point out, I concur with that. I think the timing is really, really well done here, because we're, you know, going into, we boarded our bluff stabilization project. It looks like we won't be able to, won't have to expend, you know, some of the bond money we had appropriated, and so we're looking like we might come out okay. While the timing of this, as we go through this process, might be just about right to fall in to, you know, maybe look at, you know, that's going to be a pretty nice-sized project. So I'm going to, what we do next for this city, and there's certainly a need for that. So I would support this as well. Unanimous consent was requested. Is there any objection? Seeing none, Resolution Number 2025-14 is adopted. That brings us down to item H6, Action Approval, Airport Commission 2025 Work Plan. I'll open it up to airport here, yeah. And maybe you can give us a little bit of, well, let's make the motion to approve, and then maybe a little background. Councilmember Daniel.
All right. I move to adopt the Airport Commission Work Plan, 2025 Work Plan.
I'll second.
Councilmember Daniel.
Just a moment to pull that up. Just had it too. Oh my goodness.
It's on page 93.
I'm almost there. Should have just clicked through it. Okay, so the Airport 2025 Work Plan, Commission Work Plan, the three goals here are the construction of Taxiway Sierra, which is in FY2027. And the reason for this is to, you know, the airport is a for-profit entity, and the reason is to help generate income, and this might be another source of that, for user fees and fuel sales, leased properties, and construction of Taxiway Sierra is essential to access the west side of the airport. And then there's the West Side Hangar subdivision. This could also generate additional revenue for the airport. And let's see, the third goal here was the Airport Master Plan Update. The master plan is important. It's a guiding principle that ensures the Kenai Airport, master plan reflects the needs of the community and complements the vision of the city of Kenai has for the airport. As the airport grows, as the Kenai Peninsula grows, the airport has to grow along with it. The master plan is this document and is a guide, linking the current and future needs of the flying public to the Kenai's imagined, City of Kenai's Imagine Kenai 2030 Comprehensive Plan, and ensuring that it remains financially viable entity. And all three of these are in their 2025 Work Plan.
Very good. Further discussion? Councilmember, Vice Mayor Naxton.
Thanks. I do support these, the work items, and in fact, I mean, it's something the airport is doing through the master plan process, but the commission is particularly in support of these items, and they were active last night at the special meeting for the Airport Master Plan. And so I definitely support their work effort and what the airport manager is working on as well, which is the same thing.
Further discussion?
Unanimous consent.
Very good. Unanimous consent was requested. Is there any objection? Seeing none, the Airport Commission 2025 Work Plan is approved. That brings us to a discussion item, scheduling a joint work session with the Planning and Zoning Commission for the presentation of the draft SS4A Comprehensive Safety Action Plan. And let's see what we have under that. I think there was a couple dates that were thrown out there. Yeah, they're April 16th, from 5:00 to 5:45, and this would, I presume, be before one of our council meetings, or mid-April council meeting, I'm guessing.
Yes, that is a council meeting day.
Yep. So we're looking at about 45 minutes. Is that adequate?
I'm going to defer a little bit to Kevin here. Do you think 45 minutes is adequate, Kevin?
Yes, they only need about 15 to 20 minutes for the presentation, and another 15 for questions and answers with council and P&amp;Z members.
Okay, very good. So is everybody good with April 16th at 5:00 p.m., just about an hour before council meeting? I see everybody nodding their head, no objections, so we'll go ahead and go with that. Which moves us to another discussion item, City of Kenai Arbitration Panel Membership Teams. I'll just hand this over to Ms. Sainer. This is one of her items on the agenda.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. So doing housekeeping, we have a Personnel Board Arbitration Panel that consists of 12 members, and they have indefinite terms. And while I'm doing housekeeping and seeing if I can find all of them, I recognize that three have moved out of town and two have passed away, so we have five vacancies. And the members that I did contact remembered being appointed, but they didn't realize they were indefinite terms. So what I'm proposing, if the council would like to give me direction, is bringing an ordinance back that establishes terms, staggered terms, so that we would be filling the vacancies on a regular basis. And these aren't like our commissions that we recruit through advertising. These people are nominated by employees and council members, so we would notify the employees and the council members the same time every year that it's their opportunity to nominate four new members, and the existing members could reapply. So what I propose is four members on a one-year term, four members on a two-year term, and four members on a three-year term. And four of our existing members, with a little persuasion, agreed to stay for one more year. So we need to either fill nine seats on this in the next year, or put terms in, and then we can fill the five now and four next year. And I don't need a motion. I just need to know that the council would like for me to bring forward the legislation before I rewrite a section of code.
Thank you, Ms. Sainer. Councilmember Dothan.
How do we say, "Go forth"?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm all for this as well. I guess my only follow-up question is, would you be looking for nominations from council to fill any seats?
I'd be happy to expand on that in the Clerk's report. I have stuff in there about how the nominations work.
Okay. In the report, okay.
Thank you.
Very good. Everybody's giving agreement? All right, you have the green light. That brings us to Commission Reports. First up, Council on Aging, Commission?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Council on Aging, no report. Their next meeting is on the 13th, and that will be a work session.
Airport Commission?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. So they use to the Airport Commission as my commission. Let's see here. So the big thing, the Airport Commission, I missed the last meeting, Vice Mayor Naxton covered that, but in our packet here, you'll see the annual report. A big part of that was with the master plan. But, and Taxiway Sierra is a huge part of, I'll read a little summary for everybody. Let's see. So over the course of the year, multiple special use permits, airport leases, and lease extensions were recommended for approval by the commission and forwarded to council. The Airport Commission helped firm their support for the development and construction of Taxiway Sierra and establishing a subdivision on the west side of the airport. And the next meeting is coming up, it's next week, I think, the 13th? We'll go with that, 13th.
Thank you. Harbor Commission?
No Harbor Commission meeting since our last meeting, but their next meeting is next Monday on February 10th, and they are going to review their work plan summary reports from calendar year 2024 and discuss work plan goals for 2025.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation Commission?
We have a meeting coming up tomorrow, so we'll find out new exciting stuff.
Very good. Thank you. Planning and Zoning Commission?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Councilmember Sonard attended the last meeting, and they had two considerations of plats, one for the Lake at Kenai 2025 addition for a replat of Track 8, and recommending approval of a preliminary plat at Beaver Loop Acres. In addition, they approved the transfer of a conditional use permit for the use of a hotel, short-term recreational rentals in Angler's Acres Subdivision, Edition 1. And they also approved a time extension for the finalization of Windhaven Estates Federal, our Phase 4 preliminary plat, and their next meeting is Wednesday, the 12th.
Thank you. Beautification Commission?
Beautification Commission has not had a meeting. Their next meeting is February 11th.
Thank you. Underreported, the mayor, I did attend a joint workstation with the Kenai Tee Tribal Council. We had it over at the Visitor Center on January, I believe it was 16th, it was the day after our last council meeting. And I just want to run through, just so folks that weren't there and might be listening understand sort of the things that we discussed. We had 12 agenda items ranging, you know, so they sort of, and I really appreciate the way administration set this up and staff to sort of, you know, alternate, you know, the Sea of Kenai and then the Tribal Council for their items that they had on the agenda. But we had our, for us, bluff stabilization. They had Tulon Charter School application update, and then we had the Police Department with our coordination with their tribal security. The Soldatina Clinic, which was a lot of good information there, which I wasn't really aware of, but seems like they're doing a lot of work over there. They purchased a building and are working to get that up and running. Our Old Town Playground, which is a continuation of what we're working on with them, in conjunction with them. The Kenai Tee Elder Housing Project, Kenai Municipal Airport Direct Air Service to Seattle, we gave them an update on that. We had continuity area transit, which sounds like it's going to be taken off from them here in April. The Cemetery Creek Covert Replacement, which is a, you know, sort of a joint venture with, I guess, is that, would that be a correct term, with the Tribal Council that the city is working on with them? And then a recognition of the airport, enhancing collaboration, exploring opportunities with formal partnership, which councilmember Daniel, I appreciate him bringing this forward, to maybe do a more formal committee or subcommittee with their group. And then they had last on this Kenai Tee Land Acknowledgement. So anyway, a lot of things. And then Daniel, Daniele, I want to say Daniel, my sister-in-law's name is Dan, Daniele, so get that. Lopez Stam gave a nice overview of the exhibit that we had over there. So that was really, it's, I just want to, you know, so I appreciate the work that goes into those, and those times we can get together with them. I always enjoy them, listening to what they've got going on. They've really, you know, they've been here for many, many, many years, obviously, and, you know, it's been amazing to me how sort of their leadership has, you know, moved them to the forefront here in the last 20 years, and their footprint in the City of Kenai certainly is, in my opinion, you know, much more apparent than it was even 20 years ago, and seems to be doing well. So look forward to how that progresses. And then, yeah, that was, I just wanted to say, I hope everybody enjoys this Super Bowl Sunday, and everybody wins. With that, we'll go to Administration Reports. City Manager, Mr. Feebank.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'll start. I received an email Monday this week from Kenai Peninsula, the executive director there of Kenai Peninsula Housing Initiative. This is the group that's done some low-income and senior housing development on Reedout Avenue on land donated by the city. It's pretty exciting. They have received full grant funding to construct 20 additional units down that area. 12 of those units are going to be senior housing units. Seven of those are going to be income-restricted, and five will be non-income-restricted. And then eight will be, those are one- and two-bedroom units with attached garages for seniors. They will also be constructing eight one- and two-bedroom income-restricted apartments for non-seniors. So really excited. They're really excited about the partnership that the city has with them on that land that we've donated. What that means for council is, I think, what you should be seeing in the future. We will be having to bring some legislation before you. At this point, we have conveyed or, you know, passed title to some of those properties over there, but we will have to convey the additional properties now that they've secured the funding, and that they still have to develop the property or it reverts back to the city. But you will see some legislation to convey, finally convey the remaining parcels to them. And they have expressed some interest, and we're going to be working with them, with the Planning Department, about potentially rezoning that section there. Right now, it requires conditional use, because these are multifamily, you know, establishments, so they do require conditional use, and they would like to explore potentially just rezoning so that they don't have to get conditional use on these parcels. So we're going to be working with them on that, and you may see some legislation as that moves forward. The next items I have, they're all related to probably one of my favorite parts of this job, and that's dealing with our city employees. And I got to tell, you know, I honestly believe we have some of the best people working here for the City of Kenai, and I just want to go over a couple things with you. You know, I really want to recognize the efforts of the city street crew, our Parks and Rec crew, our water and sewer crew, and airport staff, all who dealt with, you know, some weather conditions here in the last month that I don't think, you know, in the 50-some years I've lived in this community, I haven't seen it rain in January at that volume. And, you know, things, the public was incredibly patient, but those crews worked collaboratively. They all worked together. They got out there, you know, the Monday after the rain stopped and it started getting cold, they made significant progress. And, you know, when you drive through some of those subdivisions where there was 16, 18 inches of water standing on some roadways at some point in time, it's amazing the work that they did. And, yeah, I think they just did an outstanding job, should be recognized for it. Next, I'm happy to announce the 2024 Dispatcher of the Year went Next, I'm happy to announce the 2024 Dispatcher of the Year went to Michaela Dirk of Orkian. And the KPD Officer of the Year went to Levi Russell. Now, these are awards that are nominated by their peers, which I think is, is extra special for them. But I'll just tell you, this is how their coworkers, this is how they, this is what they said about those two individuals. They do excellent work, they're always available, they're willing, they're helpful, they recognize others, they improve morale in their departments, they're professional, they have good attitudes, they care about their coworkers, they're knowledgeable, they're a joy to work with, they're hardworking, they're pleasant, they have great attitudes, and they're leaders. So I just want to recognize both of them for the work that they do and being recognized by their peers. KPD Dispatch works with both police and fire in what they call their lifesaver awards. These are, these are awards that they do internally and recognize the efforts of staff there. And this, this deals with folks, honestly, that wouldn't be here today without the efforts of, of our staff over there. So this is to recognize Dispatcher Wayne, Fire, Captain Summers, Engineer Voss, firefighter Lale, and firefighter Martin. They dealt with a call. The call came in, it was a female, she was found on the ground, not conscious. Dispatcher Wayne was dealing with a distraught individual. He was able to gather the necessary information, get that individual to start CPR on the, on this female. He dispatched KFD. They were on scene in six minutes, and this was a response out to the Strawberry Road area. They took over CPR, were able to transport, they revived the lady and get her to the hospital. She was later medevac to Anchorage, but she wouldn't be here today without the efforts of those crews. So they're real professionals, and they do this stuff day in and day out. So just want to recognize them. And then the last thing I'll report is the city's building official, Joe Fisher. He's been appointed to the Alaska Housing Finance Corporation's Building Code Advisory Committee. So this is a nine-member council that's put in place to advise Alaska Housing on the implementation of building codes and energy efficiency codes in Alaska on their developments. And they're looking for industry experts and people that deal with this, and Joe was viewed that way, and he's been appointed to do a three-year term. So I think his work there will, will benefit the city greatly in how we approach our building code adoptions, and especially the energy efficient side of the code, which we currently have opted ourselves out of. So I appreciate him taking the initiative to, to get involved with that group, and I want to recognize him for being appointed. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, the City Manager? Thank you, Mr. Eubank. With that, we'll go to our City Attorney, Mr. Bloom.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel, members of council. I don't have anything to report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, the City Attorney? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Bloom. We'll go to our City Clerk, Ms. Sainter.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. So we are opening nominations for the Employee Arbitration Panel on page, sorry, 148 of your packet is the memo that explains the process. The terms at this point, because there have been no codes change, are never-ending. How to nominate? So if you, as a council member, saw the employees were sent the notice yesterday that its nominations are open, if you want to nominate somebody on the page, 149 of this packet is the application, have that person complete the application. There's a place on there where they put who's sponsoring them. The Clerk's office will verify that they weren't sponsored by that employee or council member, and we will bring these things back to the council at our first meeting in March. The deadline to receive nominations is February 26th. Does anybody have questions about that? And then I also wanted to let you guys know that we are working hard on putting together our program for the recognition and training event on February 24th at the Kenai Visitor Center, 5:30 PM. We will be noticing and running advertisements because it is open to the public, but Mayor Gabriel, Terry, and Scott and I will be putting together a very nice evening for our volunteer commission members who give a lot back to the city. Available for questions.
Questions of the City Clerk? Seeing none, we will go to additional public comments. Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to address the council at this time? Nobody in chambers and nobody online? Okay. With that, we'll go to our additional council comments. Let's start out with Councilmember Doughton down there.
I would just like to say I reiterate, City Manager's comments about Public Works, Streets Department, and all the city staff that helped out. It was pretty amazing how much rain we had and how much water came up. Our subdivision over in the woods there really got affected in exponential ways. We had cars flooding out, and people happened to be drug out of foot and a half, two-foot-deep water holes. It was, it was pretty bad, and I was very pleased to see how they showed up in force, they, they made a showing. Even on a weekend, they showed up to help start reassuring the, the general public that they were out there willing to help and try and see what they could get done, the best they could. And they adapted and got some stuff done and started seeing a way, and it really made a big impact on the people of that community, and I think all over the city, how they helped out in different areas, and getting rid of trees and all that kind of crazy weather. That effort really showed, shined through, that made people happy to be seeing city staff out working and doing that kind of stuff and helping out when they asked for it. And I'm just really happy with that, and that all turned out, and it got cleaned up. And, you know, it's pretty amazing how it went from a foot and a half, two-foot of water standing in roads to freezing up that same day almost, to slush and ice, to back to below-zero temperatures in like a 48-hour window. It was pretty, pretty incredible. And to see those streets being able to still be passable is, is pretty awesome. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Senator Tanner.
Yeah, so just a small report on school events. For Connections Homeschool, on February the 12th is a pre-K program meeting, as well as the American Invitational Mathematics Examination II tests. On February the 13th is a Valentine's STEM Activity Day with a theme focused on the heart. And on February the 20th and 21st is an Alieska Ski Activity. For Kenai Alternative High School, on February the 13th is parent-teacher conferences, and on the 17th is a vacation day. For Kenai Central High School, on the 6th is the ACR Rally in the Valley JV Girls and Boys Tournament. On the 7th is the Boys and Girls JV and Varsity Basketball Tournament versus Nikiski. The night of the 7th is also home-going. On the 7th and 8th is co-ed varsity cross-country skiing at Homer High School. On the 10th is Girls and Boys Freshman Basketball at Homer High School. On the 12th is a Valentine's Day movie, and the 13th is parent-teacher conferences. The 13th is also Boys and Girls JV and Varsity Basketball at Palmer High. On the 14th will be Boys and Girls JV and Varsity Basketball at Houston High, and the 15th will be Boys and Girls JV and Varsity Basketball at Reddington High. That's all I have to report.
I think just on that note, we have, Kenai High Club, the hockey tournament is down here at Saldana here, starting tomorrow, and I think Kenai actually had a pretty good season this year. I think they will be playing, I think at 4:00 PM tomorrow in their first game. I think they're playing, I'll, I'll get here in a minute, but we'll go to Councilmember Raskin.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I also want to echo the City Manager's comments about our employees. I got comments from a couple of constituents, too. They were pretty impressed that they responded as quickly and, and were able to do what they did. Last Friday night, I attended the Senior Center Volunteer Dinner. Over $180,000 worth of volunteer hours were donated to the Senior Center and the Civil Air Patrol served. And hopefully, my square will win on Sunday.
Are we partners on that square, by the way? Call it, Mr. Daniel.
Yes, to echo comments, residents are very, very pleased to see city staff in force for that flooding we had in the woods. Thank you, City Manager Eubank and staff for taking care of that. I know it meant a lot to a lot of people. Also, I want to thank our first responders, and I know they work hard every day, day in and day out, and the unsung heroes. We don't ever, we don't see or hear these stories, so it's really neat to hear that feedback, but thank you for bringing that for all of us to hear. Also, this is, like the mayor said, the Kenai Tia Joint Session was very productive, and I'm looking forward for the future to see if we can strengthen that relationship even more, as they have a large presence in, in Kenai, and we definitely want to strengthen that bond any way we can. I'm looking forward to more, more work with them.
Councilmember Kasana.
Not too much to add, just a big shout-out to the Parks and Rec Department for helping the KPHA with their Peninsula Winter Games Tournament two weekends ago. I know I saw staff out there several times, making sure that the facility was up and running. Appreciate that. And just give a shout-out to the Kenai Hockey Team for beating Sohei in the last regular season game before the tournament. Just want to make sure that's on record.
In overtime.
In overtime is a great game.
So, yeah, I'm looking at the schedule right now. Tomorrow, tomorrow's the 6th, right? 4:00 PM, they, they face off against North Pole for the first game. So the rest of the seating would be dependent on how they do the first game. And with that, we'll finish with our birthday boy here up here, Vice Mayor Nixon.
Yeah, I am two to the six power old today, so I'll let you guys do the math. I'm a nerd. Actually, my friends are, they came up with that. But I want to start with, I wanted to thank David Swarner for the memo in our packet regarding the federal funding. It was something that I was concerned about, especially with the bluff erosion monies and whatnot as far as the federal funding, and, and he went a little further with some of the other departments that get funding, and I do appreciate the memo, and I'm sure that the public does as well. Getting back to the rainstorm, that is something that I actually lost sleep over personally, you know. I went out and I toured twice during the, after the rain. And just to kind of put you back in the moment, we did have all that rain all of a sudden, and then the wind was blowing 30 knots, and then temperature dropped to 25 degrees, and we had personnel out there with hip boots up over their knees with water pumps. We had equipment running, of course, too. And they were, they were also not only moving water that way and pumping it out, they were, they had trucks out there, so they had to stand in the water and do that. And this is something they were doing continuously. It was, it was a huge, huge effort. I'm quite impressed that everybody was able to come together like that and smiles, and the public, everybody that I knew was very happy because they kept seeing the city out there doing, you know, doing their work and trying to save them before the freeze-up, which happened. So much appreciated. On January 29th, I went to the, I did the Chamber Cultural Center presentation that afternoon, and it was regarding the Dinana Culture, something, the new director there for the Cultural Center put together, just one of the, one of the things, it was very, very good, and I look forward to the, to the future ones. On January 31st, I also attended the Senior Center Volunteer Dinner, and thank you, you did a very good job on the report there. Last night, I attended the Airport Master Plan Kickoff, HDL, actually, someone here in the audience was here also. HDL is our consultant for that, and it's kickoff, and they, they're just wanting to hear what the public has to say. It's just gathering the information portion of the, of the meeting. The individuals that were there, there were a number of people from the Airport Commission, a lot from the public, and just others. The, there was a number of people here that were very interested in getting the service to Seattle that we've been working on. That was actually quite a bit of discussion. Some of it was Taxway Sierra and lease lots, future expansion that way. Concerns about if, what happens if the LNG plant comes in, then what? Is that part of the scope of the work, and how are they going to establish that? This is all going to come out later, what, what, you know, how they evaluate that. It's on a, on a spectrum of nothing happens, if something happens, if a lot happens. And so they'll have it covered. I thought it was well-done, well-attended, and I do look forward to the next one. Here, that's all I've got.
Thank you. Happy birthday. This evening, we have no...